Gentlemen. Okay, it's now seven o'clock. I'd like to have a meeting to order of the Huntington Township Board of Supervisors. Thank you. Any public comment on the agenda items? Seeing none, first item of business is to approve the June 12th Board of Supervisor Minutes. Any comments or questions, gentlemen?
I have none.
Okay. I undertake a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the bill list. Total expenditures for the month were $32,499.47. That's total funds.
See, that's fine.
No. $32,499.47 out of the general fund and $530.60 out of the state fund for Wilson paving. Any questions or comments, gentlemen?
No.
Okay. I'll undertake a motion to approve the bills.
I make the motion. We accept the bill list as it presented.
I'll second it.
The move is seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the financial report.
Okay, the financial report for today, July the 10th, 2025, in the general fund, our regular receipts were $43,139.55. And the expenditures were $32,499.47. But we just figured out that that's, does not have the $530.60 added in it, so that'll have to be corrected. And that lets a total in the general fund of $617,063.9. No ARP fund anymore. In the state fund, the interest received is $22.93. The expenditures were $530.60. And that lets a balance in the state fund of $278,445.2. And the total of all the accounts as of today is $895,508.11. Okay, I gotta back up. The $32,000 for the general fund is correct. The financial reports write.
Right.
The bill list doesn't have the state fund added in there.
He's the $530.
Yeah. And that total does not show on here. So both of these totals are on and these figures are correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Pat?
Sorry about that.
Are the receipts taxes?
Or are they?
The income.
For the most part, earned income tax, I think it was $35,000 out of the $41,000, was earned income tax.
Okay, property taxes are coming in?
That's earned, no, that's earned income tax.
Earned, earned.
Earned, earned income tax, okay.
Yeah, that's the only.
Off of our wages.
Right.
Okay. So any of that money, property taxes coming in?
Property, we don't, we don't have a property tax.
What is the tax we pay? School tax?
That's school tax.
The only tax we levy is, is the $10 per capita twice a year.
I got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have to keep me straight.
Oh, we'll keep you straight. Don't worry.
Okay. Any questions about the financial report?
No.
Okay. Miscellaneous items, Pat? You have anything?
Yes, I do have miscellaneous, the municipal statistics at PA.gov are approving our 2024 annual audit and financial report, so.
Received that today?
And yes, it just came yesterday afternoon.
Okay.
It's not on the agenda because it came after the agenda was.
Okay, that's, it was just notification.
Already posted, yes.
Okay, thank you. Roadmaster's report, Chuck?
Yeah, we finished the second mowing. We've been doing some, trimming back some brush and so forth. Also, our Greenbrier project is almost completed. Black topping was done last week. The only thing left to do is for the fencing company to then put repels, new fence up.
Okay.
And also, we received the culvert two weeks ago from Myers Town. It was delivered to us. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Chuck? Okay, supervisor's report. Anything, gentlemen?
I had a call from a resident in the upper end of the township thanking the road crew for doing such a good job mowing.
Very good.
I have nothing.
I have nothing to add. Okay. Scott, zoning officers' report?
We received a report from MDIA for their work in June. This is what we received, a listing of all current in progress and recently completed building permits. Down here at the bottom, we're doing the apartment ones. Last couple there are two storage shed, building space.
Could you please speak up?
We've got a storage shed, some building renovation. Those are the recent building permits.
Okay.
For MDIA.
And that information's being shared with the planning commission as well, correct?
Yep. At the next meeting, we'll receive the same report.
Okay.
That looks like an awful lot of activity.
That was for the whole year. That wasn't just.
Oh, the whole year?
Yeah.
Okay, I got it.
And this is a detailed report of every inspection that MDIA did over this past They performed a total of 23 inspections, including building inspections, mechanical, electrical, and plan review. We, the township received one application for variance hearing for 6745 Old Harrisburg Road.
Okay.
That's the EV mulch storage area plan that's currently under review. I just received that request yesterday, so details about that will be coming up.
That's in front of the zoning hearing board?
Yeah, the variance.
Right, okay.
They're on the schedule for the planning commission meeting to hear them first, and then after that, our solicitor will get with them and determine an appropriate hearing date.
Okay.
The zoning hearing board solicitor sets those dates.
Right.
So I.
Because they're different.
Yeah.
Is Mr. Battersby correct?
Teeter.
Teeter, okay, right.
I think.
Right. Battersby, he filled in last, that's right, okay. I'm sorry.
That's all I have for the zoning officers' report.
Okay. How about engineer report?
Okay.
Do you have any questions about the zoning, guys?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Greenbrier culvert replacement project, construction completed last week. We just have to work on the final paperwork and we'll close this grant out by the end of the month. That's when it expires.
Okay.
Myers Town, Chuck said that culvert materials were delivered and Low Bar is going to be starting the project here pretty soon. Update on the, I'm sorry. Update on the subdivision land development ordinance that's ongoing and our solicitor reviewed that and it's ready for review by the supervisors.
I have a question about that. There was, there was a couple comments that the planning commission discussed last month. Is there any action they need to take for, are there going to be any modifications from what we have?
I think that those were all incorporated by Andy, the county planning.
Okay, thank you.
JVI plan was approved at the last meeting. Has to be the last time it's, it's mentioned on my report. 4J Farm subdivision, that plan was approved by the supervisors at the last meeting contingent upon the planning commission approving it. So the planning commission approved that at the last meeting. Styles, one lot subdivision plan, that plan was conditionally approved by the planning commission at the last meeting. Board actions required by August 24th. EV clearing property, land development plan, they're working on responding to our comments and, like I mentioned in the zoning report, they've applied for a variance hearing. And Cronester single family house and garage land development plan, there's been no response from their engineer in the past two months. Actions required by August 17th.
Okay. Any questions for Scott?
I have none.
I have one. Okay, thank you. Any fire company reports, Pat?
Hyggersburg did turn theirs in.
Okay. Narima report?
Narima met last month, discussed updating data on contacts for emergencies, talked about the action at the substation fire and gave us all an MOU for the truck that we have all figured out, that we want to be a part of. And they would like to have responses by the end of August, so each of us have one and we will take action on that next month.
Okay, so, yeah, I haven't reviewed it yet, so you can review it then too and we'll have it on the agenda for next month. Okay.
Question. Who are the two deputies for our township to Narima?
Who are the deputies?
Correct.
As far as I know, it's Josh Fitting.
No, no.
For our township?
Yep. We have no deputy. They are looking for deputies.
Okay.
They said that at the meeting.
Also, they, they spoke about cooling stations for people when there is an emergency. I know people here in Huntington Township were without electric for four days. Was our township building offered as a cooling station?
No, it wasn't. York Springs Fire Company was, which was certainly, they have a lot more assets than we do in this room, so they were the, they were the area in this area.
Narima doesn't want emergency people coming here. They want people to go to York Springs Fire Company, the house, firehouse.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but Narima.
York Springs was the facility that was offered to our community for cooling stations during the power outage.
Because they also discussed that about how in township buildings make sure their generators are working, et cetera, so that they could offer their residents as a cooling station. So we, we have to go with the fire company.
We don't have to, but I think that's better suited because they have the personnel there and we don't for more hours than we do. This would be the only area and it's, it's not really, that's air conditioned, so I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
That's a much larger space.
Okay.
I mean, if somebody would call and say, hey, I want to use your township, I don't think we'd have an issue with that.
No.
But, you know, as far as having the, the water and the assets, the fire company certainly is more clear, more well-prepared than we are.
And then they have trained medical staff.
Well, yeah, the EMTs are right there. Yeah, we do not.
How did they notify the residents here in Huntington that it's available?
I, I don't, I can't answer that. I assume they have it on their website, but, you know, if people didn't have their internet, they probably didn't have website to access it.
Just so you are aware, we do have generators here, so we do, aren't able to continue when there is a power outage.
The night of our last month, when the power did go out, the generator kicked on before we had left. And we had our planning commission meeting.
I believe it's tested weekly, Chuck?
It's tested weekly.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, old business, review and approve Greenbrier. We've already discussed that. Review and approve the Myers Town, we talked about that. If there's anything to add. The ADA review, the door has been replaced, correct? The window is compliant?
Yes.
We can move on to some other things or we'll just get together and talk about the other thing? Madison Lang?
Panic board.
The panic board is ordered, correct?
It's on.
It's on, okay.
And they came up two days later and put it on.
Okay, so that's, we're good there now. We're good, thank you. Madison Lang, you want to, what's that, Pat? Adams County Conservation District, tick and mosquito population, okay? We've been notified, the conservation district's doing some work on ticks and mosquitoes.
She's saying that there was no West Nile virus that was detected, that the mosquitoes are increasing and the ticks are at an all-time high. And it's important to keep DEET or repellent or Picardan to when you're out and about.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. New business, Adams County Office of Planning Development, Andy Merkel submitted roadway, he gave a list of our roads to, he presented the planning commission for us to review to make sure it was correct. Road numbers, what's private, what's public. Chuck and I looked at that. I, I'll update that and send it to the planning commission guys to make sure there's no questions and we'll submit it back to the county. It's just, they want to make sure everything's correct. Subdivisions, land development, JVI, nothing new on that. We can take that off, correct? 4J Farms, review and approved. It's here, it's noted, I was applying to commission. Signed it, so, do you have any comments on that? It's a single, single what subdivision off of Ziegler Mill and Oxford Road, I believe, with the parent tracks on Cranberry Road.
Yes.
But it's been through the process and it's been recommended for approval. No conditions are outstanding, so I undertake a motion to approve that as planned.
I make a motion that we approve the 4J Farms plan.
I'll second it.
The move is seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sign that. EV clearing, we talked about that. There's no action needed for that. The Cronester waiting for an update, Scott reported that. We, we have another plan that's submitted, but it wasn't on the agenda, so we can't take action on that tonight, Ken. This is the one you submitted for the, forget the name. I'm sorry, it wasn't on the agenda, but it was conditionally approved at the planning commission, I believe, yes.
Styles? Is it Styles?
Yes, the Styles.
So does that mean that's got to wait another month?
Yes. Yeah, it wasn't on the agenda.
Is there a reason why it wasn't on the agenda?
I didn't have it on.
Isn't that costing people time and money that they're trying to do something?
Can the agenda be amended with, by motion of the board?
It used to be that you could do that, then there was a Commonwealth Court case a couple years ago that basically said you can only make an amendment like that if it's something de minimis or no official actions being taken. It basically completely eliminated the ability to amend the agenda, even though that's what the law says, the Commonwealth Court read it differently.
Ken, when did the plan get submitted? When did you drop it off here?
Today, just this evening.
Well, no, the plan's been at the township for two months.
And the planning commission approved it last month?
No, they conditionally approved it. They have not signed it yet. The planning commission didn't, you guys conditionally approved it.
No, but they don't, they don't need to sign it until.
I would love to approve it, but, you know, we can't, it wasn't on the agenda.
And, well, and my question is, do we have an answer as to why it was not on the agenda?
I was not informed that it needed to be on the agenda. I would have had it on the agenda. So I can't answer that question.
So the reason it wasn't is because you didn't know it had to be put on?
I, I don't know. If we knew it was going to be here tonight, I would have had it on the agenda and we would have voted on it, but.
Isn't that an automatic thing whenever it gets recommended for approval by the planning commission that it automatically goes to the supervisors?
And that's what should happen. I agree with that.
It's a planning commission meeting a month ago, when the fire was.
Yeah, three, three weeks ago.
Whatever happened, it was conditionally approved then, so there'd been several weeks that the township employee should have been aware that that was supposed to be acted on tonight. Fair enough to say?
Only if you were at the planning commission meeting and you knew there was action taken.
Don't you guys talk to each other?
I, I don't, if we had.
Hang out in each other's barns and have meetings? You couldn't have done something with that?
I'm not sure who you're referring to, but if we would have known it, I would have had it and we would have had it on the agenda. And I wish we could add it, but under the advice of Mr. King, we're not going to do that.
Can you call a meeting after this meeting?
I'm sorry?
Can you call a meeting after this meeting?
We have, if we do, we have to advertise it and do that.
For this?
If it's that important, we will do that.
If it was one of your farms, it would be important.
Is it that, do we need to?
It can wait till next one.
Okay, I mean, if it needs action, we'll take action.
Oh, and.
I hear you, Ken. I'm not, I, I apologize, but I.
We're still within our original 90 days.
Yes. And, you know, all I'm, all I'm saying is that there's no reason why it should have had to wait another month.
I, I.
It should have been on the agenda as far as I'm concerned.
I agree, understood.
Who's responsible up here?
Thank you. Okay, under right-to-know request, June 17th of '25, Marita Gange, any and all invoices for professional services rendered and submitted by Sultan Hughes for the month of May 25, 6/17/25, Marita Gange, any and all invoices for professional services rendered and submitted by Scott Longstreet and as Huntington Township zoning officer and shared design group for the month of May 25, 6/17/25, John D. Nicola, the number of emails deleted by Huntington Township employees from October 1st, '24 to June 17th, '25, without a resolution being passed to do so, also the number of emails that were deleted by Pat Davis, Laura Hoke and Susan Heilman while standing right-to-know requests were outstanding, 6/25/25, Marita Gange, any and all approved resolutions for the destruction of records under the Municipal Records Act of January 18th of '68, as described in the Municipal Records Manual for the years 2020, '21, '22, '23, and '24, and the approved resolution or ordinance indicating the intent to follow municipal records schedule as described in the Municipal Records Manual. Okay. Upcoming meetings, the planning commission meets on the 28th of July at 7:00. Our next meeting is August 14th and then Narima meeting is 6:00 PM here on November the 5th. Public comment?
Good, Jeff.
Signing variance meetings, is that something that's posted in the public, Ken?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be advertised. Neighbors will have to be notified, adjoining property owners are notified, but it'll be legally advertised, yes.
Is that the newspaper or your website?
It'll be on the, the newspaper by law and we'll put it on the website as well when we have the date.
Should be out here on the board, too.
Yeah. Okay. Cody, your hand up.
Cody Lear, 1847 Cranberry Road. I just got a couple things here, shouldn't take me too long. Some things that happened at the last meeting between now and then, you know, a little concerning. You know, just as far as some stuff that's happened this year, you know, the zoning officer was fired with no explanation given to the public in the middle of permitting and everything. Our engineer was thrown into that, into that role. You know, we spent over $300,000 on two culvert pipes replacements, which led to last meeting the canceling of the road project. And if I remember right, earlier in the year, the roadmaster would like to do five miles a year to keep up with the road maintenance. So we just canceled three miles of that for this year. So is there any plan to make that up? Because the road maintenance is going to fall apart. Not only that, you know, we had $200,000 in ARP money that was sitting for years, so that reserve's gone and it just seems like everything's just falling apart. You know, I've been coming to these meetings and involved with this township for over 15 years and, you know, we encountered problems before, but this seems like a lot happened at one time. And now that gentleman's got to wait another month for his plan when I see no acceptable excuse why that shouldn't have been, shouldn't have been on the agenda for the evening. If it was conditionally approved at the last planning commission meeting, you know he's going to bring the plans and paper the night that he comes in here. You just wasted his time and his evening. You know, and the excuse that you didn't know, half of you are related to each other. Jeff, you sit on the board, both of you. That's unacceptable. That stuff did not used to happen in this township. And since the past couple years, that seemed to be the new normal around here. And that's not fair to the residents, that's not fair to the people that have businesses and the surveyor that has a business wasting his time. You know, if it was your businesses or your farms, that stuff was, would have been taken care of, but when it does not directly involve a certain group of people around here, it's brushed under the table. And, you know, that's going to come back and bite the township at some point. And it doesn't need to be that way. It's, it's not a, it's not a hard job to do if you care about doing the job for the people. When you care about doing it for yourself, it does make it difficult because you're only worried about yourself. And that seems to be what's happening here. You know, we got a part-time CDL driver because of all of these road projects and you cancel the road projects. What do we need a part-time CDL driver for now if you're canceling the road work? Mowing's going to run out, which they're doing a great job, but I won't take that away from them. They're doing a good job with the work they're doing, but, you know. And then some of you sit up there and laugh, smile when the man walks out the door. That's ridiculous, okay? And, you know, Mr. Geiss, you may have competition come election season because a lot of people in the community don't know that stuff's going on. And some people are going to be finding out and come to these meetings and seeing what's going on. And that needs to change, that stuff needs to change. You guys are more incapable of doing it. Dave, you've got a lot of experience up there, you did this job before. This is getting out of control and eventually it's going to get to the point where any kind of bill fits it. And hiring your stepson's not going to fix the problem. So, you know, my words don't mean anything and I understand that, but I don't know who's going to call it out or who's going to, who's going to try to attempt to make some change and look at things differently in this place because it's been run by the same families for 50 years, my family included, okay? Which is why I did not run, because there needs to be change in here from other people for everybody and not just themselves. And the things that keep going on in here just get crazier and crazier. And that million dollars is going to run out. Pat used to have on the financial report every time, we were in line with five years ago and 10 years ago, we always had a million dollars in the bank. I don't recall ever in 16 years canceling a road project with a $200,000 ARP budget money yet. So I think the board needs to put some of their personal differences aside and start doing the job that you're here for. Because one of the concerns is that there's going to be a property tax in Huntington Township levy if we can't make up some money. And that has not happened for a very long time. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Lear, you said you've been involved here for a long time.
Yep.
Could you give me a reason why we have two of the biggest culverts in our township all due in the same year?
Well, I obviously didn't work for the township at that time. Well, I obviously didn't work for the township at that time, but I would be willing to drive out and show the whole board a pipe just as big on Mills Road that I was to, that was put in by the employees of this township. They didn't have Lowbar $200,000 to put it in. That box culvert was just delivered out here, this township has got more equipment than it has ever had, ever. They are more than, and you have two more than capable guys, for sure, plus your stepson, which I'm sure is a strong young man, could easily put that pipe in.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment, Mr. Resch?
Ron Resch, did you ever tell these folks what the rock charge was on the Greenbrier?
No, because we have, until we get the final bill.
Okay, I hear that rock charge was about $160,000, $170,000.
It was, it's going to be a large number, yes, sir.
Over and above what the contract bid was.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's where some of your money went, Cody. I don't know what happened when they hit rocks.
Well, I understand that, but this township can't afford two culvert plates going out and $400,000 culvert plates, it can't happen.
Well, I agree, and I wish that would have been done over the last several years, but it wasn't, and when they were failed, we have to replace them, so...
And you cannot sit there and blame the last people over here.
I'm not blaming anybody, I'm not blaming anybody.
I know you're not. You can't blame the last people over here.
You know?
We had a lot of water that caused that problem. Cherry Hill, Mills Road, same thing.
Okay.
We don't need to argue it, I've been here, we all know what's going on.
Yeah, we're not going to, okay, thank you. Anybody else? Marie?
Yes, in reference to that, I noticed on Todd King, the solicitor's bills, that there was a dispute with the Greenbrier contractor, would you mind sharing that with the residents?
Dispute?
I don't know what you're...
Okay, I'll check, I'll check again.
The dispute was he reviewed the, he reviews the plan and then the invoices to make sure they, they all match the bid, but I, you know...
And I'd like to make a comment to Mr. Geiss about why the culverts, I've been coming since 2021, and those culverts were discussed since then, and roadmaster, at the time, Mark Lear, indicated, and it's on video, December of that year before he left, he said if that culvert wasn't done before the spring, because you two constantly kept it to the side, so there's the issue, and that's the end, I have hang on.
That's how it's true. He did bring it up, I will agree, but he, we could not decide on the precise culvert at that time. It was five months.
For four years, four years.
Four years, no, not four years.
It takes you that long? These, because I remember when Mr. Resch brought the culvert in front of his pharma, it was the same time you were talking about Greenbrier, and it took four years, and it took a collapse for you to finally realize, whoops, we did a boo-boo.
No.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kenny Miller, Ken, you have something to say?
Yeah, I'm here all with Matt House, representing the Sunnyside Cemetery Board, and we're here on, changing the atmosphere in here a little bit, on a thank you to the township, and for the cooperation we've gotten, and especially for with Chuck King and Chad Asper, we cleared off an area on the entrance of the town, of the cemetery up there, going into the cemetery, we had some trees down, and Matt and I worked on a project, trees cleared off, and we planted some grass seed, and the township came and helped us out, and Chuck was a big help with pushing some trees out of the way, leveling some ground, of course, and when you've got to deal, as we do in the cemetery, where we don't have any, we're not affiliated with any organization, no churches, that we've got to rely on the community to help us out and keep that going, and we really do appreciate the help we get, we have some reorganization of the board, we got things going in the right direction, but another thing I want to say about Chuck, I know he came up here early in the morning, he didn't want to interfere with his work schedule here, but there was one Friday when he was not scheduled to work, I think he was working four days a week, he came up here on Friday on his own voluntarily and helped get some things that we needed, plant some grass seed soon thereafter, before one of the rains, so I just want to say to the supervisors, we appreciate your assistance, and Chuck also for what he's done for us.
Thank you.
Absolutely, I'd just like to echo those comments, we've been working on that sort of entryway to the cemetery for a number of years, just difficult to get grass to grow there, well, we have a pretty good stand of grass right now, and with what Chuck and Chad did, that area, the first thing you see when you go to the cemetery is really looking good right now, it's better than it's ever been, so we want to thank the supervisors for allowing that work to go ahead, and Chuck and Chad for actually doing it, very much appreciated, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will make a motion for adjournment, is there a second?
I'll second.
A discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Return, thank you.